Vice Chair, motion done.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this being our first meeting after elections, I'm gonna ask the board if we can go right to new business and reorganize the board. We need chairman, a vice chairman, and a clerk.
Fine by me.
What do you, uh...
It's on your agenda.
What do you, uh, what are you asking for, like a motion for...
Well, we're skipping over this. I want to go right to new business and reorganize the board first.
Yep. You're running the beat.
Oh, and you're looking for a motion to reorganize the board?
Right.
Sounds good.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. At this point in time, I want to attain a motion for chairman.
Jeff Walker, the chair.
Okay. I'll second it. Any other discussion?
I guess the discussion would be, I would accept the chair, but I'd like to... I watched Joe just work hour after hour after hour as chair, probably anything from like thirty-five hours a week plus. I saw him travel to Washington on his own dime. I see him go to Boston all the time when issues arose. So, if I should receive the nomination and if I am voted as chair, I would also like to have a motion for a very vital and active vice chair, so that all things are covered by, you know, not just one person, because I'll tell you what, no one could do what Joe did.
He did a lot. There's no arguing on that.
So, if I will take the nomination, you guys can vote for chair if whoever we nominate for vice chair realizes that they're gonna get a lot of duties.
I would just expand on that and say that I think, you know, I mean officially, the chair runs the meetings and stuff and is sort of a contact person, but as you say, Joe did a lot more than that. And I think whoever ends up being chair, yourself included, the rest of us should try to all pitch in. And obviously, the vice chair, you know, naturally would be a key role, but I think to the extent possible, we should all try to pitch in and spread the load more, 'cause there's no way, you know, especially with many of us working full-time, it's, uh, we can't put in that kind of hours. And, you know, if it's something in Boston, I'm in Boston most of the time, I could maybe handle that and so forth.
Real good point.
Try to spread it out as well as we can.
Yep.
Always one of the points of getting to a five-board, if I've never bored in the first place, was to try to spread out stuff, so...
I think what David said is well-heard, because I can remember Joe asking me to do things. I can remember Joe asking others to do things, and we might have made it for a certain period of time. I went to school committee meetings for quite a while, but it seems that atrophy can set in very quickly, so... And then Joe would probably go and do it, because we weren't doing it. So, like I said, my schedule, my time, my ability to function as a good chair will not... I won't be able to do it, put the time in that he did. So, if I am elected chair, I'll take chair, but only with the conditions that people help. I think it makes a better board anyway.
I concur.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of those with Jeff Walker as chairman of the Board of Selectmen for this year? Aye.
You're it.
Okay. Now, I want to attain a motion for vice chair. And, uh, I have, I'd like to make a motion for vice chair, if it's okay with everybody else. I'd like to nominate Chuck Baer as vice chair. Chuck's been along, uh, he's been a selectman quite a while. He's in town during the day, and he's attended a lot of the meetings. He's been here during the day for the different meetings we've had. And, uh, he's never, he's never held a chair. And I think the time has come that he, at least he get on the vice chair roster, and we'll see how it goes. And, uh...
That's not very encouraging. I think he can do better than that.
Now, that means, Michael, that you're stepping down.
I'm stepping down, because of my health and everything else. I, I was, I would have taken the vice chair, and I've, I've done, I've done it quite a bit for the last, actually, almost two terms. But I, it really should be somebody younger and that's a little bit more active. Right now, I'm having these difficulties, and it's only to be fair with the town, this change has to happen. So, I, I'll still help you. I'll, I'll still run a meeting if I have to. I'll be available whenever I can, but I don't know, one day or the next, what's gonna happen. So, I have to, I think it's only fair that we, that I step down from that position.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, it's seconded. We have Chuck Baer as the vice chair. Is there any other discussion?
Discussion would be, I think, if we're gonna lose my, the linkage to some of the things, such as the fire department, will be well-served with Chuck. So, I think it's a good motion to make, and I would have seconded it if David had.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, aye?
Oh, yeah, aye.
I'm already screwing up, guys.
If you're gonna become a chair, you gotta stay awake.
Any opposed? No opposed, so congratulations, both of you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, clerk.
Okay.
Isn't that always, I make a motion, can the chair make a motion?
Sure.
I thought the clerk always goes to the newest person on the board, anyway.
Often.
Often, so, someone make a motion other than me.
Especially since he's not here.
I'll make the motion that Damon is chair. I mean, excuse me, as clerk.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. I have to say, I'm so used to just sitting back, so it's gonna, I will apologize for all the mistakes I will make for the next three weeks, and then maybe I'll have it under control, so... Are there any board and committee reports? Hearing none? Are there any citizens' concerns? Hearing none? Any public hearings? There are none. Town administrators' report.
I just wanted to make note that the fire truck specifications are complete and are available for viewing. I have them in my office. If anyone would like to take a look through them and comment, I'm gonna send out an email to the Board of Fire Engineers notifying them of the same. Take comments probably through the first week in June, with the idea of, you know, moving forward with the purchase soon thereafter.
Will they have them available for their meeting?
Well, we're anxious to get it submitted prior to June 1st. I'm not sure when their next meeting is, but I'm gonna ask Doug Junior to be put on the agenda. I'll take any comments or concerns prior to their meeting, and then would ask for them to vote at the meeting.
They won't meet till the what, third Monday?
First Monday of everyone?
Third, is it first Monday or third Monday?
I cannot answer that, I'm sorry.
I'll find out.
Okay.
Appreciate, I think we should.
Yep. Also wanted to notify you that I have received a notice of resignation from our town accountant, Angel Wills. She will be leaving effective July 2nd. She has gotten a finance director slash town accountant job in the town of Wyndham.
Truly?
Very proud of her, very excited for her. I have posted the position on the town's website and have run it by the personnel board, so we'll be conducting interviews to get someone on board, hopefully, to coordinate with when she's leaving. It's a very busy time of year for us with closing the books and everything.
Huge hit.
Yep.
Is a motion out, Mr. Chairman? I make a motion that we accept her resignation with regrets.
With regrets?
Wyndham. Wyndham, I'm sorry.
Is there, is there a second? Did you second it?
Can we also add on to that to send a letter to her for thanks for her service, please? Okay.
Is there a second?
Yes, I do, I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good news, bad news, you know?
You must train, train people well, Tracy. The proposed summer schedules, we need a motion to accept the proposed summer schedules, and the meetings in June would be on the 24th. The meetings in July would be on the 22nd, and the meetings in August would be the 26th.
Motion to propose, uh, accept.
I just wanna point out that I'll be out of the country on the 24th.
Okay, wait, wait, we're gonna have a problem then, 'cause I'll be at my granddaughter's graduation on the 24th.
Then let's, let's change that date. Wanna, wanna go to the first Tuesday?
First regular meeting.
Yeah.
Damon won't be available for that. He's out of the country. How about the week before, maybe?
I'll take the summer off.
Well, we've got three, won't we? Jeff, Chuck, and Damon.
On what, the 24th?
On the 24th.
Okay. Let's, let's do it, just to keep the, uh...
Will Damon be on the 24th?
Yeah, he's back on the 24th.
What do you think, guys? Do you wanna propose another? What other Tuesdays in June are there?
It's okay with me, there'll be three of you anyway. Let me see what I've got.
I don't have a calendar open.
I'll have it in a minute.
What's the Tuesday before the 24th?
Seventeenth. Seventeenth. We could always meet at another location if you needed to.
We could, we could meet at the fire station, probably.
Which day are we talking about?
It's available.
Which day are we talking about, in June?
My, my only thoughts...
The 17th.
My only thoughts are, if the 17th is available, and if we can meet at the fire station, Dave, if it is a full house, we're only meeting once, we should probably have the full board.
Seventeen works for me.
How about you, Michael?
Seventeenth?
Yeah.
Seventeenth's good.
Chuck? So, the proposed summer meeting schedule will become June 17th, July 22nd, and August 26th.
Okay.
And location to be determined?
Yep, very good, Kath. Thank you.
Motion as amended.
Can we, we just hold a minute? I just wanna see what... Yeah, that could work for me. Okay.
All right, Chuck.
Motion as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Two, one-day liquor licenses for Governor's Academy for their reunion June 6th and 7th, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. Kathy, everything in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Two, one-day liquor license for Byfield Community Arts Center, June 7th, 2014, and June 21st, 2014, from 7:30 to 10:00 p.m. For their Cat in the Cradle Coffee House. Everything in order, Kathy?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Designate the finance committee members as special municipal employees per request of Robert Connors, and I have to say that I have no idea what the heck this is, as of right now. We have something here from, Bob here tonight? We have, when did this come in, Tracy?
This afternoon.
The information from Ginny, from town council?
This afternoon.
This afternoon?
Yeah, I contacted her to get it, so that you'd have it for tonight.
Okay. The, the reason for this, I believe, is that certain, at certain times, people are involved in certain things that could provide a, an ethics violation, and this would relieve some of their exposure. At first glance, when this first came up, I thought it was a pretty good idea, because I happened to look to parts of it, like in section 17, which no one has in front of them, but it prohibits municipal employees from accepting pay or other compensation in connection with any matters of direct substantial interest in the towns. There are times when, like right now, I'm involved with the town of Essex in a grant doing eelgrass restoration, so there could be times when, like as selectman, I could be involved with the town of Newbury and working on the marsh. So, I don't really have enough information for myself to be able to explain this totally to everyone here. If people think it's a good idea, I will read what Ginny wrote. Do you want me to go over this? Or does everyone...
I think that the key part is right here.
You mean what specials may?
Yeah.
Let me, let me give the audience a little bit of an idea of what this is. The purpose of this memo is to provide information about the impact and procedure for designating members of the finance committee and our capital planning committee as special municipal employees. One thing I'd like to say at this point, if this seems like a good thing for the finance committee, if we think it's a good thing, if this is something we're gonna pursue, why isn't it a good thing for the selectman?
I concur.
Excuse me, is the document already have it automatically?
Frank, microphone.
Are you ready for me to make a comment?
Yeah, go. Yeah, I've been waiting all night.
Yeah, well, don't go to sleep. I actually wrote this, this letter, and the entire finance committee endorsed it. So, on behalf of the committee. And, and the exemption is for a committee, not any particular member. It has to be for all members of the committee as a class. And, and I'm told, by the way, that virtually every committee in Newburyport has this exemption. And it's basically addresses paragraph 17 and 20 of, of the Ethics Commission.
Which I can read later, if people want me to.
Yep. And in towns under 10,000, the Board of Selectmen can designate this, or I think maybe even the town council, I'm not entirely sure. But our view is, you know, virtually everybody in Newbury has either a real or potential conflict. I mean, beginning of my term, I had to write a letter, you know, explaining that my daughter's a teacher in the school system. And, and you're still, members are still subject to all the requirements of the Ethics Commission, except basically, and it's a little bit convoluted, but basically, if, if you need to defend somebody else within the community other than yourself on some issue, or speak on their behalf, you're allowed to do that. And, I mean, the town has so many interlocking interests that we don't, we just don't wanna have people get in trouble inadvertently, without even knowing what's, what's happening. We've all taken the Ethics Committee test, and we're all subject to that. And, you know, hopefully, we're all abiding by it religiously, actually, is my letter regarding my daughter, but there may be other issues. And so, we feel just more comfortable as voluntary employees, and this, by the way, applies to unpaid appointed board members, basically.
So, that's where the selectmen, 'cause we have somewhat of a stipend, we're paid, so...
Yeah, in some cases, if you're paid, and the selectmen just automatically have it.
Okay.
So, and we think it's probably a good idea for all the boards and committees who are volunteers to, to have this exemption.
It's gonna be my next question, is what is, the rest of the board should be inclusive in this, not just the finance and capital planning. I mean, should we look into that and see what boards are affected by it?
Already a lot that are designated as special employees. Leslie has a list. We can get the list from...
Okay, so for our next meeting, we could go there.
So, we're starting, Frank, we're starting to see a little bit of an information stream. It does not, it's, it doesn't seem as alien now, after your presentation, and it might... I, I really, when I first happened to hear about it, I says, well, why don't, why can't this letter happen? And the fact that we already have some of those same protections, it would seem to me we would want everyone serving to have the same.
I just also wanna say something related to this, and that is that most people don't realize that as municipal officials, the bar is pretty low when it comes to ethical situations. Even the appearance of a conflict of interest can get you in trouble. And, you know, we've had a number of situations in this town and other towns over the years where someone gets fined or something for the appearance of a conflict of interest. And I can think of a situation in a nearby town where it was probably a lot more than an appearance, but the bar for criminal charges in terms of bribery and all that kinda stuff is extremely high, where for those of us that serve the public as municipal officials, we really have to be careful, 'cause as I said, even the appearance of a conflict of interest potentially could get one in trouble. And so, it's a, it's a difficult situation. And I think that wherever we can, you know, getting these folks the appropriate designation, just to help them out. And as you point out, in a small town, we can't help but have a lot of interlocking interests and...
Yeah, and it seems as though we don't wanna discourage people from volunteering.
Yeah.
And as you pointed out with Joe, for instance, I mean, he's 35 hours a week, for which he's paid, what, $2,500 a year as a, as a Board of Selectman? You know, I mean, it's, we're a town of volunteers, and we're all concerned about the town, and we all wanna abide by the Ethics Commission bylaws, or rules and bylaws, and state regulations in that regard, but, but we wanna, don't wanna thwart the whole process either. And I frankly already know of one member who will likely resign from the finance committee, you know, unless we get this, this designation.
Jeff, we have a question. Yeah, knowing that we will probably, thank you, Frank, knowing that we will probably put together much more information on this, and it might not make it through this evening, but I'd like to recognize people in the audience, anyone that might have any questions, uh, specific...
So that we have a bigger understanding?
Yep, this is pretty chopped up. I think everyone's gonna have to grab a little bit of this, 'cause this is new to me, too. But section 17, which pertains to the restrictions against acting on behalf of others, prohibits municipal employees from representing a private party before municipal boards or departments. It also prohibits municipal employees from acting as agents of others in connection with any matter of direct or substantial interest to the town. Finally, it prohibits municipal employees from accepting pay or other compensation in connection with any matter of direct or substantial interest in the town. These provisions differ from those designated as a special municipal employee. Specifically, specials, which means special municipal employees, may represent private parties before municipal boards other than his or her own, provided that he or she has not officially participated in the matter. So, there's, there's, that's still pretty restricted. Act as an agent for a private party in connection with a matter of interest to the town, provided that he or she has not participated in the manner as a municipal official, and that the matter is not within his or her official responsibility. And finally, receive pay or other compensation in connection with matters involving town, involving the town, provided that he, she has not officially participated in the matter and is not within his or her official responsibility. Section 20 is also involved in the discussion before us tonight. Section 20 prohibits municipal employees from having financial interest in a contract with the town. As a special, a person may have a financial interest in a contract with a different department than the one he or her serves, provided that he or she files a disclosure of that interest with the town clerk. A special may also have a financial interest in a contract with his or her own department if she files a disclosure of interests with the town clerk and the Board of Selectmen, and the board votes to grant such an exemption.
And what does town council say when it's said?
This is her summary.
That's her summary.
Yeah, this is from, yeah.
There's another page.
Yep. Go ahead. All right. With regard to requests for designation of a position as specials, the board would first determine the duties for which the person in position is charged, then determine... Then determine whether it is good policy for Newbury to have less stringent ethics provisions for those individuals serving in these roles. For some positions, the Board of Selectmen may find designation as specials to be a good policy. For some positions, the board may take a contrary view. Note that it is a municipal position that is designated as having special status, not the individual. Therefore, all employees holding the same office or position must have the same classification as special municipal employees. For the same reason, it is important to take a long-term view of the designation and not consider it based on an individual's current serving, whatever the issue is that's pending right now. Any other questions, Stevie?
Steve Fram, 21 Forest Street in Byfield. It may very well have changed, Frank. I was in City Hall in Newburyport for 18 years. I saw one employee get this designation in 18 years, and I think the same thing is true in other local communities, small communities, but that could, that could very well have changed. I just haven't heard about it. I have a couple of questions, or points of interest that I think are affected by this. Number one, and this is just me, I think there's a big difference between a political appointment to an advisory committee and an employee. I mean, it's two different animals, I believe. Town council may disagree. Second question I have is, what happens if you don't wanna reappoint someone? Now they're an employee, is it, I mean, can you not, just not reappoint them? I mean, it might be different when it's in, when somebody's an employee versus a political appointment. And lastly, by our own rules or bylaw, I'm not sure which one it is, you're creating a new position, it has to go before the personnel board for, you know, clear muster with them, I would think, because these positions have never been employees before. So, I think the wise thing to do is put the cart back behind the horse, and let's make sure if we do it, that we do it correctly.
Thank you, Steve.
I think that was well said, and it certainly adds another layer of, I think, the quest for information that I know I feel right now is, so, it's gonna be my estimation, or at least...
I have one comment to make to what Steve just said. And, again, this is from the letter that we got from town council, or the memo. In terms of procedure, special municipal employee status can be assigned to certain municipal positions by a formal vote of the board. Positions are eligible to be so designated only where they are unpaid, or it is a part-time position allowing work at another job during normal working hours, or the position was not paid by the town for more than 800 working hours, which is approximately 20 hours per week during the preceding 365 days. So, it does not apply to regular, full-time staff in town hall. It requires to, it's only people in these special categories. And of course, our appointed boards are unpaid, so they would naturally be eligible. Doesn't say we should grant it, but it says they would be eligible.
You know, another question, I just happened to look up and see John Weiss. That's an elected but unpaid. I don't know where the planning board would set, would, would stand. Go ahead, John.
John Weiss, 3B Black Duck Circle, Chair of the Planning Board. I, this is all new to me as well, and we haven't discussed it at the planning board, and I'm not sure what the disposition of the planning board would be. Perhaps you both might have some sense of it. Has it ever come while you were board members?
I, I can't even remember, can you, Dave?
Well, certainly it was longer than you. I don't, I don't remember it coming up. I remember it coming up, you know, for other people in town government.
Yeah.
And I think the problem is that, you know, whether we're appointed, elected, or elected on these boards, we're... we're considered municipal employees in the broadest sense. And I think that's part of the issue here, is it's a little confusing. And we'd probably have to actually go back to state law to confirm what's.
My take on this is that we would like to get a copy of whatever Jenny has said, and we'll check with her, and also
Yeah.
attorneys who are on the Board, such as George, and then discuss it as a group.
And Tracy, do you mind checking around and seeing what other towns are doing?
Sure.
Please. All right.
Well, I guess, under the circumstances, I would move to table this item to our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's involved, isn't it?
Mm. Letter of interest from Linda McCamick for opening on the ZBA Board, and letter from Howard Tracy, Chairman of the ZBA. This is the letter from Howie. We were recently advised that two of our members are stepping down. Wow, how do you say that name? David what?
Silvanowicz.
Silvanowicz, is leaving the end of June, and Eric Savan, our alternate member, has applied for the Planning Board to replace George Marsh and their associate member. At the same time, Linda McCamick is leaving the Planning Board at the end of this month, and has expressed an interest in being on the zoning Board of Appeals. She has been our Planning Board representative for the past few years, and would be a great asset on our Board, and her zoning knowledge. We have placed a notice on the website for the person's interest in working on our Board, and, and it has shown, and we have, and we have some interest. We respectfully request that Linda McCamick be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective this meeting if possible. Our meetings are time-sensitive due to state law, and we must have three members to hold a hearing. Thank you for your consideration on the matter. Is Linda here tonight? No?
I don't believe so. The email in front of that is from her.
Yep. Hi, Kathy, as you know, my time on the Planning Board has ended this month. We would like very much to be considered for any opening on the zoning Board that become available. Most of the time, our appointments, we ask people to be here, but I'm going to deflect because of the time sensitiveness to what the Board would like to do.
I'm just a little puzzled by the letter, you know, about the, the fact that it was apparently posted, I gather. I was trying to.
Meaning what, Dave?
Oh, we have played, the, the, the last sentence in the first paragraph from the Chair of the ZBA that says.
He placed the notice on the website.
For person's interest in working on our Board, and HOE. And it seems like there's some typos in there. We have, we have, we have some interest. I don't, I don't. If, if there are other folks that are interested, I think we should find out who they are first. I mean, having worked with Linda, I have a very high opinion of her from my time on the Planning Board. I think just to be fair, if there really were other people that were interested, we should clarify that. But I do understand that, you know, the ZBA has time constraints when something becomes before them and so on. So, I'd like to resolve this as fast as we can, but I'm just puzzled. If there was interest, who were they? If, if in fact, this is all a typo, I don't have any idea what the HOE was, then maybe there wasn't any interest or something, and this is.
It just got posted, so I, and I haven't heard anything.
Okay, when was it posted?
The end of last week.
Okay, so we really haven't enough time for people to respond if they are interested. I mean, normally for these kind of slots, we have a hard time finding volunteers, but I think in the interests of fairness.
Why don't you, uh, David?
I think that should say, and we hope we have some interest.
Okay, that would make sense.
Where Eric is basically serving right now, why don't you make a motion that we, we? When's our next meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of June.
That makes it long.
That's under the gun.
Hmm. What's the will of the Board?
Seventeenth soon enough, huh?
Is it?
Well, he's leaving.
Make a motion, Dave.
I make a motion that we table this until our next regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, which is seventeen.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you, David.
I, I make a motion that we table this until our next regular meeting, which is June seventeenth.
Are they going to be able to hold a meeting if we do this?
Well, the, the person who is leaving doesn't leave to the end of June, so they're, they're covered.
I will second your motion, then.
And I'd like to add that the people be present at that meeting that would like to be.
Well, you know, what we've done for other positions is asked for a, a brief resume.
Yep.
So, maybe that, if, if we've got, it would seem like maybe we should try to be consistent across all our different appointments and so forth in that respect. So, we could just let Linda and anybody else who expresses interest that we'd like to get a, a brief resume before the next meeting.
And I, and I would say that with the sensitive nature of the zoning Board, and the end of the month looming, if, certainly if Linda is the only person that seemingly is there, that definitely, just a, a resume and coming to the meeting would be great. So, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Police appointments for the year two thousand and fifteen, per recommendation of Chief Riley. Newbury Police Department appointments, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. These are the appointments for the full-time officers. I should imagine I should just read them all, and we'll, at the end, you know, make the motion. Michael Riley, Chief of Police, Emergency Management Director, Harbor Master, on and on and on and on. John Lucy, Deputy Chief, Deputy Emergency Management Director, Deputy Harbor Master. Boy, I'm going to be bad on names, that's one thing I will be. John Ruthia Sergeant, Patty Fisher Sergeant, Stephen Jenkins Sergeants, Aaron Ruzicky Detective, Matt, woo, what's that one? Chief Samoski Patrolman, Michael Croto Patrolman, Stephen Siff Patrolman, John Lucy III Patrolman, John Reagan Patrolman. Reserve Officers James Valonis, Michael Malott, Andrew Bridges, James Bedad, Charles Kobe, Daniel Jenkins, Amber Todd. Police Officers Appointments to Include Authority of All Waterways within the Town of Newbury. The Reserve Dispatches, seeing none? Special Police, Special Police, Carol LaRocque Animal Control, Reed Wilson Assistant Animal Control, Roger Mary Special Police, Robert Vega Panin Chaplin, oh, the, the Riley, Christopher Walsh, Triton Facilities. Assistant Harbor Masters Brendan Stokes, Gregory Downs, Daniel Lee, Daniel Brown, Anthony Papoulis.
Motion to approve all.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. There you go, Jeff. Thank you.
I, I have to apologize, and I was an elementary school teacher, and I've never been good on names, so thanks for helping. Minutes of the May sixth meeting, I think, Mike, you weren't here, were you on that one? Where are they? I think it was only us guys. Who?
Yeah, I was in.
Yeah, story, Bear Walker Mountain.
Yep. All right, so I'll make a, entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second, Dave?
Just quickly reading it, just double-check. Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Acknowledged receipts of Comcast PEG access support check in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one fifty-nine, first quarter of two thousand and fifty-four, from Comcast enclosed. Please find a check payable to the Town of Newbury pursuant to the Comcast Cable Television Renewal Alliance. This check may pursuant to Section six point four PEG access support in the amount of stated before and is used for Newbury Public Education and Government access operating needs. Also enclosed is the associated statement of revenues for the first calendar quarter of two thousand and fourteen. Do we have to make a motion to accept this or anything, or just put notice, just, all right, so, so be stated. Communications. A letter from TEC Associates regarding the Mass Bay Commuter Railroad two thousand and fourteen Vegetative Control Program. Now, I read this, I don't, Tracy, did you look at that? What does that mean? Someone else owns it now?
I did not.
All right, let me just read it here. This came across, and no one from the ConComs here, so I don't know what difference this would make. Newbury Port Conservation Commission, Newbury Port Town Hall, twenty-five High Road, Newbury, Mass, Massachusetts Bay Commuter Railroad, this is their vegetative control program. Dear Commission Members, I am writing to inform you that the Massachusetts Bay Commuter Rail right-of-way in Newbury has been transferred to a new operator of the commuter rail service. Kilos Commuter Services right-of-way maintenance will now be done. As a result, yearly operation plans, which are YOPs, will now be issued under the Kilos name. There are no changes in the wetland delineations of vegetation control methods. TEC Associates will continue to handle vegetation control issues. I imagine this is just communications, because obviously, the Conservation Commission, I imagine, has got it under control.
Yeah, it sounds like procedures aren't going to change at all, so.
Letter of appreciation from the American Diabetes Association Tour de Cure, read and filed. This is addressed to Tracy. We want to thank you for allowing the American Diabetes Association North Shore Tour de Cure to ride through Newbury this past Sunday. Though the weather forecast predicted rain all week, we had nothing but sunshine the day of the event. There were nine hundred and sixty-five riders, that's quite a few, on the roads, two hundred and ten volunteers, and our fundraising efforts have totaled to be more than, is that right, half a million dollars? Wow. This event would not have been possible without your support, and we just want to tell you how much we appreciate it on behalf of. So, that's great. Agenda item for topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair forty-eight hours in advance. And this is the clam license, right, Kathy? Is that letter in here?
Yes. Oh, no, it's, that's the special decker jacket.
Okay.
Okay. We have the application, the letter, and then Jeff Jamburn's.
And the, the Fish Commission has thought it was good?
We have a letter of approval from Jeff Jamburn, yes.
Okay. This is to the Town of Newbury, and it's a clam permit application. For us two, okay. It's from Colleen Corkum, thirty Forest Street address. It gives emails, and it gives relevant information. It's in front of you guys, too. Is it the normal procedure that they get the town permit and then go for the state permit?
No, it's usually done the other way around, but as I understand it, he doesn't have the money to do the state permit, and he's not going to be able to clam, so he does it best without knowing that he's eligible. But he can't actually receive his local permit until he has the state permits.
I'll entertain a motion, guys.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any meeting updates? Executive.
I would like to say that
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Chuck.
The Highway Department has done a fabulous job on Moody Street. All of the driveways connecting onto Moody Street have been molded in perfectly. And the very end, they have just loomed it and seeded it today. The tree will arrive on Thursday. It is donated by Mr. Fred Davis. No cost to the town, and it's really looking good out there, so kudos to our Highway Department.
Thank you, Chuck, and I think that is definitely going to be an attribute. Executive session, none. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.